Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Madeira Beach Board of Commissioners Special Meeting. Today is Tuesday, December 1st, and the time is 6:00 PM. Commissioner Lister, will you please lead us in this evening's invocation?
I will, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. If you'll stand and pray with me, please. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we are so blessed to live in the city of Madeira Beach. We ask that you give us our wisdom and our guidance for the decisions that will be made tonight that will affect the citizens of Madeira Beach. We always keep you in mind first. It's always in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would the City Clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Here.
Commissioner Hodges?
Here.
Commissioner Shantz?
Here.
Mayor Palladino?
Here. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the provided minutes.
I so move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any additions or corrections? Would the City Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Shantz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Poe?
Yes.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
I so move, Mr. Chairman.
I second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any comments from the Commission? Is there any comments from staff? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Shantz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
All right, next public comment. This section is reserved for public comment on matter or concerns pertaining to city business and which are not on the agenda. Public comment is limited to three minutes. Would anybody like to speak this evening? Okay, closing public comment. Consent agenda done, unfinished business. Before I introduce ordinance 2015-17, Mr. City Manager, would you please like to give us and the Commission and the exact what we're voting on, what this ordinance is about?
You've got, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Item number one under unfinished business is the second reading of the rezon. So you're going to go from its current zoning to a planned development district. Item number two is the development agreement, and I want to be very clear on what that means. The development agreement is an agreement on how he develops the property, how he manages the property, how he uses the property once the new facility is built, is his management right, frankly. And so that, those types of things won't be entered into the agreement. For example, if I was to own a condo or a hotel room there, and there's a bar on the rooftop, and I want to invite Commissioner Lister up for a drink at the bar, and we don't think that that should be allowed, that's not going to be in the development agreement. Frankly, if he's not breaking any city codes, he's allowed to operate the facility as he sees fit. So that's, those are the two things that you're doing tonight, and we've gotten to the point, or we've gotten sophisticated enough where the rezon and the development agreement are before you finally in tandem, so it doesn't look like we're revisiting the same issue time and time again. So in the past, you had done the rezon, and then two months later, the development agreement would be written. Tonight, we're ahead of the game and everything's together. So after tonight, this will be a done deal, and the architect can get going on what he needs to do.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Mr. City Attorney, would you please read ordinance 2015-17 by title only?
Ordinance 2015-17, an ordinance of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, rezoning certain real property generally described as 13220 Gulf Boulevard from medium-density multifamily residential open parren R3 close parren to planned development open parren PD close parren district, providing for reading by title only and providing for an effective date thereof. This has been a second and final reading of ordinance number 2015-17 by title only.
At this time, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that this Commission pass ordinance 2015-17 on second and final reading.
Second, Mr. Mayor.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or comments from staff or the Commission?
Staff recommendations for approval.
Mr. Mayor.
Is there any further comments? Yes, sir.
My name is Rose Loggett. I'm at 13231 Gulf Lane, and I would urge the Commission not to pass this. I've been here since late 70s, took ownership of the property back in '81. Back then, you had five over parking, which is what's going to happen if this is passed. The city commissioners at that time decided in wisdom to restrict buildings that tall, no more west of Gulf Boulevard. There are some there now, but they were built prior to the Commission at that time saying no more buildings. When the property was developed, that was probably prior to that Sands of Madera, we supported the three over parking, which it is right now, on R3. If you want to see what passing this is going to do, just travel south over the bridge into Treasure Island and take a look at that monstrosity of the building on west of Gulf Boulevard. That was going to happen if we start passing this planned development. Planned development is also, in my opinion, a way of bypassing the magistrate and getting certain things approved without the magistrate ruling on certain variances. I don't want Madeira Beach to go back to five over parking. We're going to have solid walls west of Gulf Boulevard if we do that, so I would urge the Commission to not pass this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Rose Loggett. I'm at 13231 Gulf Lane. The property that's directly south of the Sands, well, I'm sorry, the Barefoot Beach Resort property that is on the Gulf itself. First off, I'd like to thank Vice Mayor Poe for attending all the community meetings and having the interest in that. When we first came to the meetings about this with the Planning Commission, it was almost like it didn't matter what we were going to say, they were going to vote on it right away and get it passed. So pedal back to the recent redefining of contiguous properties. Contiguous properties are usually meant to be a butt to one another, except in rural farm communities where they have a lot of pasture lands and stuff. I guess it was November timeframe, the Commission voted to redefine contiguous properties even though they're bifurcated by a road, which is the case of Barefoot Beach Resort. So this means if we zone, or if you rezon the property that's in between Gulf Lane and Gulf Boulevard, that's west of Gulf Boulevard, east of Gulf Lane to R3, the contiguous property that's across the street on Gulf Lane that's actually on the Gulf is also going to have an R3, I'm sorry, a planned development classification as opposed to an R3. From the beginning, we've asked the Commission, the Planning Commission, to reconsider that, allow this property to go through the normal magistrate, and that was declined. So what we want to do is, we're not telling these people, and we never have, that we didn't want to see anything developed there. Originally, it was going to be a wall, it was the variances, it was going to be right up against Gulf Boulevard, I mean Gulf Lane, right in front of our house, skewed totally to the south. I have to recognize and applaud the builder and the developer for making the changes that will center that property or that building and also increase the setbacks. However, we're still concerned about what we're doing here as the City of Madeira. We've been on the beach since the 70s, our neighbors since the 40s, and on your website, our website, the City of Madeira's website, we tout ourselves as being a small beach community, a small fishing village. And if you start to do what Treasure Island has done, Clearwater Beach has done, you can go to West Palm, that's not why people come here. They want that small beach community, and that's what we have decided as a city to market ourselves as. So I'm asking that this Commission, before they make the decision that affects both of these pieces of property, to rethink what the long-term impact to Madeira Beach and our community is going to be. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just so for everybody's awareness, we don't have the remote for the clock, so I'm keeping track on that, kind of old-school iPhone here.
Jack Boziak, I'm the architect and the agent for the owners and the developers. I just want to make one thing clear. I agree that I don't want to see the kind of building go up that went up on Madeira, on Treasure Island, and I want to address that because I think there were some really important, and I appreciate that Rose did mention that we did make some major compromises. As an architect and a developer over the years, I would agree that if you are going to just build corner to corner, I think a three-story building that would have gone much greater lengths on Gulf Boulevard, it would be a much more devastating building like the one at Treasure Island. I think, and I hope you realize that we sacrificed and moved the south property line to 61 feet and the north property line to approximately 80 feet. So the whole purpose of trying to pick up additional height under a PD is you give up something, which we did in tremendous side yard setbacks, that basically preserved that corner on the north end and leave that parking lot on the south end. On a 320-foot piece of property roughly, we've got 80 foot on one end in setbacks and 61 feet on the other end. That's how you avoid having that Great Wall of China that's down on Treasure Island. Yeah, we have, the only reason you should allow additional height is that there are some compromises. The compromise is being, opening the vistas up on the sides so that the air is open to the view from the road. I think it'd be a tremendous mistake to allow a three-story building over parking that you can't see any further over than, rather than what we've asked for, which has created tremendous setbacks that allow an open vision down Gulf Boulevard, which I think is even more important than that monstrosity that was built down there. And this is not a license to go forward. Fred Bullard and I have the piece across from Church by the Sea, and we have been discussing with staff, you know, we'd like to go five stories, but we can't do any trade-offs. So there's no, we haven't asked for it even. There should be reasonable trade-offs that allow for more open space along Gulf Boulevard. And there have been recent cases in the last seven, eight years of Bellarte, for example, that went to excessive height, to large heights. And in our case, I think that the large setbacks that we have given were what I think the city should be looking for in the way of trade-offs. Certainly, when you trade almost half of your property as trade-offs or setbacks, or about half of your property, it's beneficial to not have this thing stacked from one end of the property line to the other. So I think we didn't ask for, there was no additional density. The trade-off was simply to try and open Gulf Boulevard up a little bit more. There is a five-story over parking building across the street, so it's not like, it's rare to the area, and I think we've avoided having a long corridor down Gulf Boulevard. So I think that it was a wise decision by staff and the Commissions to, the Planning Commissions to support this, because it is certainly something that's a far better building than what you see in Treasure Island. It does not have, you look at the side yard setbacks there, are I think 15 feet on one side and 25 feet on the other, maybe 25 and 25. If you had any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Boziak. Can I follow the project down Treasure Island and actually talk to the mayor of many enough Treasure Island? I know that the city did not work with them, so they took the footprint as far as they could go on that structure, that's why the length of it. And this is the idea of following the Planning Commission through this whole thing, which all brought forward, was to have a smaller footprint, to have it opened up to where you do get a few through to Gulf of Mexico. So I understand what you're sitting there saying there. Yes, sir.
Tom Edwards, resident on Gulf Lane protected address. Just to clarify a couple things Mr. Boziak said. The ordinance says that they have to have a third of their sites, whatever the size of their property, a third has to be side setbacks. So he's not actually giving up 50% for side setbacks. He was going to have to come in a number of feet anyways in order to give up, have the side setbacks. And then during the neighborhood meeting, we had talked about whether the planned development for the existing hotel could remain as an R3 for a certain time period. And he says, well, if the Commission wanted to do that, they could do that into their development agreement. So that is something that you could consider, is keeping the existing hotel as an R3 for a certain period of time, certain years, and not have it tore down. Once they, once they do this, they're changing the value of their property as a planned development. So they could have the planned development on the existing property that they want to develop and keep the existing hotel as an R3 for a period of years, five years or whatever. And he said during our neighborhood meeting, if the Commission wanted to do that, they could. So please consider that. What we don't want is someone to come in and tear down the existing hotel and then make a much larger hotel on the existing property on the beach side between Gulf Lane and the beach. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would anybody else like to speak? No. Any further comments from staff?
No, Mr. Mayor, the only thing that is germane is that the planned Commission voted unanimously for approval.
All right. Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Shantz?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Poe?
Yes.
Next contract agreement, development agreement. Mr. City Manager, would you please read that by title only?
City Attorney. The development agreement is to consider the application for entering into a development agreement between the City of Madeira Beach and the Barefoot Beach Resident Resort LLC located at 13220 Gulf Boulevard as rezoned in ordinance 2015-17. That's the subject of the development agreement before you, before this body.
At this time, I will entertain a motion.
I so move, Mr. Mayor.
I second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any comments from staff, Mr. City Manager?
Nope, just that again, it was unanimously approved by the Planning Commission, and based off that, staff recommendations for approval.
All right. Any comments from the Commission?
I'd like to say that this is probably one of the finest pieces of legislation I've ever seen in the City of Madeira Beach, and I've been around here for a long time. But it certainly covers a lot of territory, and it's very well done. And it keeps everybody right on, you know, it's not, it's not like a handshake that we're going to do this, and then when you turn your back, they don't. I think it's a great thing, Shane.
I wish I can, I can't take credit for it. We've got Louie in the audience tonight from Dave Healy's office, Al Carrier, staff, city attorney. The city attorney actually ended up authoring the development agreement, but it's important in these instances to make sure that they're thorough and complete, otherwise ambiguity just creates chaos, so. I appreciate the compliment.
Wonderful. And just to follow up on Madam Mayor Shantz's, plus we have excellent Planning Commission in, staff did do a great job on this, so Mr. City Manager, compliments to your staff. Is there any further comment?
I'd just like to say that I appreciate you guys coming up here because I know it's difficult when they build right next to you. I've got seven parks in my neighborhood, and every time I want to do something to a park, the people that live right next to it, they bother them. It's my park, don't bother with my park. I went to Ruth Sarless's house the other day, and she says, Terry, they're messing with my park. You know, it's a city park, so, you know, I had to talk to Ruth, and again, I understand, it's right, it's in your backyard, and planned developments are just that. Planned developments don't give carte blanche to anybody. They have to come before us every time they want to move a piece of property or do something to a piece of property, and if Jack doesn't come before us, or the architect doesn't come before us and give us something back, it's pretty much off the table. Planned developments are going to be good for the City of Madeira Beach. When I talk to my planning developer over here, is this good for the City of Madeira Beach? Yes. It's good for the City of Madeira Beach. It's going to upset you, and I'm sure it already has upset you to a certain extent, but overall, it's going to be good for the City of Madeira Beach. We are a small community, been here, my family's been here since 1946, before the city was founded, so I love Madeira Beach, and I would never do anything to Madeira Beach that would hurt it. And I'll stop any developer that comes in to just build a wall on the south side, because I love walking our beach, just like you do. And I live right around the corner from you on Oak City Drive. So again, I appreciate you guys coming up and saying what you said, but again, I think this is good for the City of Madeira Beach. Sure, you can get up and speak. Absolutely.
I think what we're most upset about is the process. First off, it was almost like we were on the opposing side. Comments were made that we know, you don't want to see anything there. That never came from us. What we want to do is ensure that it's good neighbors. We live there, okay? These are developers, they pay lots of taxes, they don't live there. This is the only remaining residential, primary residential area, and when we asked the Planning Commission, how many of you have been down there? One. How many of you listen to the tapes? None. And so we're saying, you're ruling on something that you haven't even listened to, the conversations that went on, you haven't even walked down there. Finally, what was the gentleman's name that wears the T-shirts with the longer, he just got his hair cut? Noble, right? Is that his name? Okay. He's, he finally went down there, and all of a sudden, he came up with, I want more sea oats. Well, we went, wait a minute, timeout, here's the situation. The sea oats, I had to practically promise my firstborn, when, when the people that used to own, the Starks used to own, they let the, you know, the mounds build up and the dunes build up, they were almost encroaching in the house, as tall as my house, and I had to call the state, beg for them to let me bring in a little front-end loader to move the stuff. I couldn't get to the beach. I still can't get to the beach, except for the corner that goes into the Barefoot Beach Resort. And this year, Shane was saying, we have, every year we go out and we put those, we do the plantings, right? Well, we're losing turtles because we're getting so far out there, it's encroaching on our beach space, and the turtles can't get far enough up to overcome the high watermarks, and they're getting washed away. So, and we have no access. The three houses that are sitting there, south of the Barefoot, we have no access to the beach. There's no path through there or whatever. I mean, the guy that came out first, well, why don't you put one of them walkways down there? And I'm like, you know, they would confuse the public walkways, and I'd end up with that guy when I walk out of my bedroom, and he's going, you know, and I'm saying, excuse me, you know? So I don't want that to happen, but I just want you guys to realize, you know, where we live. Come on down to Gulf Lane, walk the lane, because we fought it the last time when they were calling it an alley, and they tried to, and we said, it's got a name and we've got street numbers, and we've been there for a long time, it's not an alley, and that's what was happening before when they wanted to build over the Boulevard and stuff like that. And I think that's involved, aren't you? So all we're saying is, we're trying to be good neighbors, we're trying to maintain, yes, what we have. Do we want Madeira to stop development? Absolutely not. We wouldn't be able to survive fiscally or otherwise. But what we want to do is have recognition from the Commission that there's a group of people out there that you're representing, and that we don't always want to say yes to every builder that comes in here. And what we're asking is, now that you're down to this second agreement here, the PD, is that you can put in a caveat that says, the property that's west of Gulf Lane on the beach can remain R3. Why not? And give this PD only to the property that's east of the lane and west of Gulf Boulevard. And then in the future, be cognizant that there are no other properties in the area that has Gulf Lane all the way down to 130th that has a big building like this. This is the first one. So Madeira made decisions in the past not to do that. So this is the first one, and of course, you're going to get a little bit of opposition. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
My wife always says, try to be a little bit nicer than what you are. So I'll try to be a little bit nicer, maybe. I was very disheartened by the Planning Commission. We had a lot of meetings, a lot of discussions, and as you well know, the ordinance says any agreement is part of the proposal. When we asked, has anybody viewed, did you have to be videotaped and notes have to be turned in by Jack? None of the Commission, Planning Commission members had viewed the video and what was agreed upon. None of them read the paper that Mr. Boziak turned in, but there were, it was unanimous that they voted for it, yet. I find that very disheartening, because as we spoke about certain things that were agreed upon, all they could say was, give us a note on it, give us a note on it. Well, that's after the fact. They should have read the notes, they should have gone ahead and viewed the tape and find out exactly what was said, what was agreed upon. So we were disappointed about that, and I don't see the reason for the Planning Commission. If they're going to do that and rubber stamp everything that goes through them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. City Manager, I know that we had a private meeting, or not private meeting, but we had a meeting with that, and I forget your name, sir, but we had a meeting with you two. I know that things were brought in front of me, you were worried about the fire lane or the fire truck getting through there. I know that I took time and rode with the fire engine down through the city. So all those things were discussed from what I saw in the Planning Commission and what I've seen in the notes. So was there any other safety concerns?
No, sir.
Okay.
The Planning Commission, they had a quorum. They had four out of the seven there. So they're saying unanimous, it was just the four people that were there. It was apparent that they had not read the development agreement, at least was a couple of them. One of them asked a question about whether the sand dunes and sea grapes that had been brought up at a previous meeting were in the agreement. If he had read the agreement, he wouldn't have asked the question. Another one was asking the question about whether the site plan was as they had previously discussed. And again, if they had looked at the exhibit with the diagram, the site plan, he would have known that it was the way it had been discussed.
Mayor, I'd like to stop. The integrity of the Plan Commission's not on trial tonight, and so if your comments are germane to the development agreement, I think you're...
Well, it is, because they are making a recommendation to the Commission to vote on the development agreement, and they are supposed to be doing the research, and you take that under consideration. So it is germane to the incident. The City Ordinance on Neighborhood Information Meeting says, the applicant should provide to the city both a written and video record of the Neighborhood Information Meeting, including any representations made by the applicant to the attendees, which shall become a requirement for the project. And one of the things I brought up that Mr. Boziak agreed to was the pilings. Are they going to be piledrived in, or are they going to be bored? And he says they're definitely going to be bored, and he said that again at the Planning Commission meeting. So it's not written into your development agreement. Banging pilings in does affect the neighborhood while they're doing the development. The City Attorney agreed that should have been in the development agreement. Now, I have a question of the attorney here. In page 14, the entire agreement, it does say, "Any oral agreements, agreements created by written correspondence or any other matter previously discussed or agreed upon between the parties emerged herein." So the statement that Mr. Boziak made at the Planning Commission meeting that they will be bored, does that become part of the agreement, sir? Because that is part of the development agreement. I don't know, I'm asking the attorney if that would apply, sir.
I'll let you complete your period of public comment and then...
And then the other thing that had to do with was the rooftop bar. That is the design of the bar, Mr. Boziak says it's going to be 15 to 20 seats in an enclosed building. And that's not, there's no diagram on here showing how that is, the rooftop is going to be developed. There's nothing on here. And that was part of the discussions of the neighborhood meeting and part of, you have the site plan, but you don't have how the rooftop is going to be designed, because that should be part of the development agreement. That's all I have, sir, is this, that, there's a couple of issues that came up that seems why your ordinance should have been put in the development agreement, and it's not. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Boziak.
I just thought I'd try and clarify a couple of things, because these were, we had more than one Planning Commission meeting. Unfortunately, we had about three, if I recall, and may have even been a fourth that started and ended because we had some scheduling problems, and we didn't have a recorder, a video recorder there, which was called for, which I was quite honestly not aware of. But the, first of all, the rooftop bars for the, there were plans submitted for the rooftop bar, the staff did have them, and it is about a 15, 20-foot seating capacity. It's solely for the use of the residents, or the tenants of the hotel, it's not for open to public use. Secondly, the, what was that? Oh, we do intend to use, we've run the borings and we are starting the drawings, we are using auger pilings. We're not using driven pilings. Driven pilings are, you know, could cause damage to adjacent properties, and we've always said we're going to use auger pilings, and we're going to use auger pilings. The third concern was that by leaving the building in the front, the possibility, which really is contrary to a planned development, to leave it as R3, and I stated that, you know, the owners are going to put an excessive amount of money into renovating the back, the Gulf front building to look somewhat like the front building, and you're not going to spend $2 million renovating a building to just tear it down and go through this whole process again. In fact, we have plans into the city to improve the pool area and add another section to the pool. So, there's a lot of money being spent on the front that is not going to be very sensible to go back in and tear it down and attempt to do a five-story building there or something. So, that has never been a part of the plan. Can I swear that nobody will ever do it 10 years down the road? I, you know, who knows? They can come to the commission, the owners at that time, and ask for whatever they want, but as the attorney has said, that's part of the process of, you know, going through the whole thing again. It's not, not part of what we plan. I just wanted to clarify those things. And we did, one of the compromises we did make is, you know, we basically put about another 42-foot lot in setback, which I think is pretty, a pretty decent amount of additional setback, so, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Bozziak.
Mr. Mayor, I think the gentleman in the audience brings up a germane topic about the pilings, and if they're going to be augered in, or if they'd be, you know, piled in, so to speak. It's not, he's, I think he's right. It's not in the agreement. The agreement is moved to that issue, but what I can say, and there's going to be minutes to this meeting, is that we won't release the building permit until we are assured by the developer that they'll be augered in, and we can do that administratively instead of amending the agreement.
Right. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Is there any further comment?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Everett.
Hi, my name is Jim Everett, 15458 First Street East. I'm here as a citizen, but I also sit on the planning commission board. I was watching this at home, which is why I'm here, because I heard a lot of comments from the residents about planning commission duties and what was done and not done. I personally walked up property three times. Sorry, I'm a little out of breath because I was running to try to get here before commentary closed. We reviewed this ad nauseam. This project, because of some questions about the public meeting, was reviewed more than the normal number of times, and we, I read, I read the development agreement. The only thing that was brought up about the sea oats was, I think Mike was trying to be sensitive to the beach preservation. That was, that was brought up at the last meeting, they said they didn't want that, so we did not add that in our recommendation to you guys. So, I think that we accommodated the owners really above and beyond what normally happens on projects of this nature. I also think that the, that the architect and the builder made quite a few concessions as a result of the meetings with the owners. And I was under the impression that, excuse me, that they were pretty happy, as well as they could be. I mean, nobody likes a development built right next door to them. But I just, I'm a little disappointed that, that the comments were made of the planning commission. We all take our jobs very seriously. We met on a little bit of short notice at the last meeting, which was the reason that we only had four there, but I really feel like, like everyone carefully reviewed the development agreement. I know I certainly did, and I just wanted the commission to know from me that, that we take our position, our job, very seriously. I've been doing this for five years, and, you know, I think I've gotten a pretty good handle of how things work, and I really thought the process worked really well in this situation, based on how the development looked and how it didn't look. I also have some insight to the Treasure Island development, because I have a business in Treasure Island, so I attend those commission meetings on occasion. The reason that that looks like a concrete wall is, as commented earlier, the city would not grant a variance on that construction. They wanted to go up two more floors so they could pull it in from the property line. They were not allowed that. So, they built to current code, and that's why it looks like it does. So, I think that's a perfect example of what we have avoided with our process here in Madeira Beach. Thank you.
Everett, thank you. Once again, I said it before, and I'll say it again, since you're here now, that the planning commission did due diligence, and I watched and reviewed all the meetings, and like I said, I've had personal meetings with the two gentlemen right here, and I think that everybody's concerned, "Are you going to make it perfect for everybody?" Absolutely not. Nobody's going to be happy. But meeting Mr. Parker, the owner, I think he's a fair man, I think he's, doesn't want to do anything to hurt the city, hurt that property. He wants to be part of this city and make things work. So, Mr. Everett, thank you very much for running down here. Is there any further comment? No? Madam St. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Shantz?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yep.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Poe?
Yes.
All right. New business, we have none, reports of correspondence, does any commissioner have any reports or correspondence?
The only report I have is to remind everybody about the Christmas concert, Florida Orchestra, December the 18th.
I can't hear you.
Everybody get in and get your tickets. You can get them right over the, with your computer, right? Do they sell them out at the rec building?
Yes.
They do? Okay.
All right, Madam Mayor, and I'll just follow up a little bit with you on that one, and to remind everybody, December 10th, we're going to actually be doing a cornerstone presentation here at City Hall. It's a, actually a Masonic presentation, done for public buildings. Some of the first buildings of our country were actually, had cornerstone presentations, and they were actually laid by George Washington, so it is kind of a historic event. The public is invited for that, so hopefully you'll see everybody there for that.
What time is that?
And that will be at 5:00 PM on the Thursday, the 10th. And then to remind everybody, Saturday, the 12th, is our annual boat holiday boat parade, and with conjunction with the boat parade this year, there will be, actually be a concert at Rock Park. So, that'll be a first for that one. That'll be very exciting. And just once again, to follow up with Madam Mayor Shantz, on the 18th, the Florida Orchestra will be playing, and once again, Madam Mayor, thank you very much for your hard work to bring the orchestra here.
Thank you, thank you.
My husband, thank you too.
You got it. And you didn't mention, Mr. Mayor, they're having fireworks out here after the, after the boat parade too, which I think is awfully nice.
Outstanding.
Mm-hmm. Lots of things for the children over there.
And I noticed the new playground equipment going up, so, Mr. City Manager, great job from staff down there at the rec center, it looks fantastic. Mr. City Attorney? Any comments?
No, no comment. It was a pleasure to work with you folks this evening.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. City Manager?
Just one quick thing, you know, we tried to take December off for staff to catch up. As you can see from the calendar, that's going to be impossible. We've got a bunch of special meetings for other development purposes and other things that we have to get done. Vince and I had postponed some house cleaning type of financial issues that we've got to get done this year. So, if you look at the week of Christmas, it's a busy week for not only you guys, but for staff and the planning commission as well. Just for your edification, the site plan is in for the Lev Rocks property, and so we've got another doozy on our hands, so it's, it's been busy. The one thing that I think Commissioner Shantz usually brings up is something that you want to do for staff for Christmas, and I don't see how a day off this year works, and frankly, you know, I'll be the first to tell everybody that they deserve a day off, but with Thursday and Friday being off, I just don't see how we can do that. So, if you want to do something for staff, I, you know, I don't know what the solution is. I've been kind of racking my brain about it, but we'll figure out something, but I certainly can't give them the Wednesday before Christmas Eve off or the Monday after, so, unless you tell me to.
Mr. City Manager, I know that we have a special meeting on the 22nd. Why don't you take a chance and talk to the rest of the commission, and maybe we can come up with something on the 22nd?
Yeah.
Instead of thinking tonight.